At 6:03 today for the March 14th regular school board meeting. Our first item up is Madison and O'Nadie Bozies Administrative Budget Presentation. Do you guys want us to sit here?
You can sit there.
Okay.
I'll sit over from here if that's okay. Can we get our microphone?
No, you go bring your microphone.
Wonderful.
Hi, thank you. Give me an extra.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice call, Paul.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. Joining me tonight is Lisa Decker. Lisa is our Director of Finance and Scott Loomin is my Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services. So I'd like to just take an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the program side of the house and then I'll turn the budget over to my colleagues. So I'd refer you to the right-hand side of your packet to begin. Excuse my back, everybody. You'll see the first item in your packet is really what we call a Bozies Program. And it really is about the Bozies Business Model and how it works at Madison and O'Nadie Bozies and the Bozies across New York State. And it just talks about fundamentals. I believe we've had an opportunity to review this with you in the past, so I'll just leave it with you for time's sake. The second item in your packet really is a snapshot of your current contract with our Bozies. It identifies for you the programs and services that you're currently participating in. And then the next item in the packet is probably what I think is a really valuable piece for all of you and I'll give that to you for your pleasure meeting. What we've tried to do is to identify for you the scope of all of your services. So this document identifies the number of students that you have in the programs. It talks about some of the unique opportunities that your young people experience through our work and it talks about program outcomes and graduation rates. And so you'll see on the first page it talks exclusively about career and technical education. As you move into the packet, you'll learn about the programs and services that your special needs students are receiving at Bozies. It also talks about the professional development that you're affording your teachers and leaders and also about the management services side of the house. So you can look at that at your leisure. Having said that, I really would like to expand a little bit about our current technical education services. Because I believe that our current technical education services that we're providing are really providing a pipeline for our workforce in our local communities. In terms of outcomes, I am proud to let you know, and this is really attributed to your faculty here on campus as well as our other eight component school districts along with our team. Our program outcomes for last year's cohort were that 99% of our students completed their program. In addition to that, 72% of those young children, young people, pass a national assessment, which means that they'll be leaving with a credential. So when they go out to the workforce, they may be going into a field that they were trained in, which I think is really impressive because as you know, the programs are rigorous. So they come here, they get a region's diploma, they come to Bozies, you know, they get academic credits. Many of our students are getting articulation agreements as well as dual credit. So those young people are working very hard and so we're really proud of the work that we do. So in terms of last, that same cohort, 60, we know by survey that 60% of those young people last year went on to two or four-year colleges. 15% of them have gone into related fields of employment. 6% unrelated and remaining young people either went into the military or were not able to locate them. Over time, we have spent some good time with our superintendents in the region as well as some of our boards to take a look at what is happening in our local communities, where the gaps are in workforce and what the needs are to help our economy to grow. And in your packet, I've identified for you and brought along three brochures of some newer programs or some programs that have had some shifts due to the requests of our superintendents. So what I want to share with you is first the program brochure on the Manufacturing Technology Program. So this problem, this program evolved under the leadership of some of our component board members who were passionate about filling a need as indicated by our surrounding communities for machinists because there absolutely has been a short shortage. So if you read the brochure, you'll notice that students who complete this two-year program will have the opportunity to receive the Certified Production Technician credential and acceptance into local pre-apprentice programs. And we're really very excited about that. Our teacher has been working in manufacturing for a number of years and he's really very excited. Another program that I'd like to draw your attention is the third program in your packet. And this is a program that Katie Emmlin, our program director, is really excited about and wanting to work on for the upcoming school year. So this program highlights a new partnership with Madison County. It's a one-year new visions program and this program will offer students the opportunity to engage in learning and reverse academics and college preparation activities. But they'll also participate in rotations within county and local government in addition to the court system. So that's something that we're offering for the first time and we'll see how those enrollments go. And then the last program that I want to talk to you about is our Automotive Technology Program. So we've been running this program since I came to Madison and O'Nadie Bozies and many before that and our enrollments are really good. But what's exciting about this is that this year we had the opportunity to form a partnership with NIFORD in Oneida. So three days a week, our students are now going to NIFORD where the money dealerships are and they're having live work experiences, working alongside mentors. We're really excited about it. There's lots of opportunities. We just started there in January and I know that two of our students have been offered employment upon graduation. And the other great opportunity there is that some of our local colleges that we have automotive programs have an incentive with Ford. So if you were to go to that college, that Ford would pay for your associate's degree. So we have one student that's been invited to do that, so we're excited about that. So if you look at the bottom of that automotive handout, you'll see that many of our programs offer community internships, college articulation agreements, and dual credit opportunities, which helps all of our students as they prepare for workforce. The many dual credit opportunities that we have in CTE are listed in your packet in the next page. So on the left side of the page, this, the programs, and then you'll see where the dual credit is being offered from and then some of the post-secondary course workers that are involved in these programs and the potential credits that the students can receive. And I just wanted to spend a few minutes to talk about internships. So over the last several years, the Bozies has partnered with several different businesses and industries to assist our students in achieving internships in the community. And those internships all look a little different. So there are new visions programs. Students participate in experiences from October to May as a part of their work and they're out three days a week and they're working side by side with mentors. Our culinary and early childhood programs do their internships during the week for a five-week period. And then finally, our cosmetology programs are a little different because they're licensing programs and the students will have to take a licensing test. And these go out, these students go out for a five-week internship. With regard to your Hamilton students, if you'll take a look at the next sheet in your packet, you'll see some of the businesses locally that our students are interning in. And we're really grateful for those partnerships. You know, our students go out, they participate in these internships. Sometimes they realize their passion and sometimes not so much. And I think that's just as valuable. So I think it's great opportunities, we're appreciating to our partners. And then remaining in your packet, just some pieces of information that I thought you might want to know about. You know, all of us are experiencing challenges and there's a rock where we're seeing a rise in young people with mental health needs and challenging behaviors. So we have designed some new programs and services for those young children and those are identified in your packet. Tomorrow, we're holding our first mental health symposium at the Bozies. We've invited Dr. Mark Brackett from Yale University as our keynote speaker. And we're excited to provide that opportunity for our teachers and leaders. And then finally, in your packet, I just put a summary document of the work that we're going to be doing in the upcoming year to support schools, teachers, and leaders for new technologies and the new regulations. And as you sift through that, you'll see that we're going to be doing a great deal of work this year focusing in on Education Law 2D that takes a look at student data and privacy. There are new regulations that are lofty and require a lot of resource to make them happen. So we'll be looking rigorously to support our teachers and leaders in this area. So that's all that I can have. And with that, I'm going to short term myself, turn this over and send Scott the budget.
Can I, I just want to ask you a quick question.
Oh, of course.
Articulation agreements, the expression is not one I'm familiar with. I guess you mean co... Does it mean alliances with higher ed?
Yes. And two-year contracts.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'll be reviewing the administrative budget, post-administrative budget. It's in your packet on the left side and it's on the blue sheet. So I'll go over the elements that are required to be in our administrative budget. This budget covers our central administration office as well as our business office functions and our Board of Education. So salaries included in this budget represent 8.2 FTEs that we are district superintendent, assistant superintendent, my position, half of our assistant, Dr. of Finance, 20% of our resource manager, and four and a half clerks and our whole support staff. It also includes all the fringe brackets related to those positions. We have small line items for equipment, software, and supplies. We have other expenses such as our village workshop and meeting expenses for all the positions that I mentioned as well as our Board of Education. That includes our annual meeting, which is April 10th. We hope to see you all there. We also have our independent auditor in the budget as well as membership fees. We are members of NISV, NISGS, and ASBO, these are the groups that help with our advocacy efforts on behalf of all of the school districts. Contracture expenses that are required to be in the administrative budget include our 403B compliance and our GASM 45 study. We have superintendent meetings and postage and advertising for our legal notices. Down at the bottom, you'll see some internal charges. So just as you purchase services from Bozies, the administrative budget also pays for its share of services such as technical support through the RIC and labor relations and negotiations. So if you look at the bottom, the current meeting 19 budget for all the direct expenses is $1,324,000, or 14, or 314. Proposed 1920 budget for those direct expenses is $1,382,516, or 4.39% increase. And then if you look at the back page, you'll see the second half of the budget that's required for Bozies. We are mandated to show all of our retirement health insurance expense in our administrative budget. So that's represented on the back in Part B. We have 225 retirees and are anticipating another retirement for next year. So the total administrative budget for this current year is $4,687,441. Proposed for 1920 is $4,946,906.
And that includes the 20?
Yes. And then in Part C, you'll see the revenue sources that offset the budget above. So we have some miscellaneous revenue and interest and direct costs and retiree drawn subsidy. We also have an accrual for collections in advance, which as you'll notice, that number directly offsets the retiree health insurance. And the last part is the local contribution among the nine districts. So that share across the nine districts this year is $1,068,053. And proposed for 1920 is $1,100,070, or a 2.93% increase. And then down on the bottom, you'll see how that is allocated across the nine districts. So it's allocated based on ARWADA or Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance. So that's based on attendance figures from the prior school year. So if you look at column one, you see the estimated ARWADA for all of the nine components. That totals $15,492 for this year. For next year, the total goes down by $121,000 to $15,371 specifically for Hamilton. Currently at 562 ARWADA. And for the 1920 budget, it's 585, which is an increase of 23 ARWADA. So column two shows how that translates into your percentage share. This year, Hamilton's share is 3.6. Next year, the share goes up to 3.8. Column three shows the dollar share. So Hamilton's dollar share this year is $38,775. Next year will be $41,874. And then column four shows your estimated aid ratio. So for the administrative budget as well as Bozies program budgets, the state looks at your mileage ratio and your ARWADA aid ratio. So a mileage ratio is a factor of your tax levy to your property value and the ARWADA aid ratio looks at your property value as a function of the ARWADAs. So that looks at which of those two ratios is higher. For Hamilton, your mileage ratio happens to be higher. So column four for Hamilton is the mileage ratio. This year is 57.5%, goes up to 58.8% for next year. Column five shows the estimated dollar amount that you'll receive back in aid based on your aid ratio to your expenditures. And then column six shows that net local share. This year, the net local share of your aid for Hamilton is $22,570. Estimated for next year is $24,278. Are there any questions on the budget or the allocation?
Turn your next slide.
Aye. Next.
You can say whatever you want. I can't hear you.
The green document is the capital and rent budget. If you take a look at that, there's just one side to this document. You can see at the top, we have several line items of rented space with some facilities projects. Specifically, the rented space, we rent space from school districts. So it's an expansion of Bozies, but it's revenue to the school districts. We rent, for example, pre-K space, summer school space. We put some of our allied health classes in public schools. We rent the Costello Center from the Oneida City School District. So the rent rate is set each year by a committee of superintendents. And the three superintendents that set the rate were from BBS, North Belaton, Oneida. This year, the increase was 1%. But even though the increase, even though the rate went up a bit, the volume of classroom shifts from year to year. So you can see our proposed rent budget is going from $171,645 to $163,753. The next line item is our large facility project that we did quite some time ago. Their scheduled payments through 2023 went from $966,450 to $959,450. And then finally, we're doing some security work in our Rosetti Center. That line item going from $600,605 to $615,497. For a total capital and rent budget of $1,738,700. So keeping that flat for the third year in a row now. Down below, you can see the local distribution. Again, primarily a function of ARWADA, which is column one, and column four, which is the estimated rate, aid ratio. Column one, as Lisa indicated, the ARWADAs in the region have dropped 121, but in your case, you went up 23, from 562 to 585. Column two shows your corresponding percentage share, going from 3.6% to 3.8%. Column three shows the corresponding dollar share, up about $3,000. Column four shows your aid ratio, going from 53.5% to 58.9%. Jump there, 4.6%. Column five shows your estimated aid for your expense. And then column six shows your estimated local share after aid is applied, from $29,330 to $27,726, which is about $1,600 less than last year. Any questions about that budget or any other?
Do we have an extra packet for... Okay.
Thank you for having us to come to Jevy this evening. I hope that you'll join us at the end of the evening, April 10th. And I also want to thank Paul for letting him join our board on this jury. He's got a great sense of humor. He knows a lot to say. I really appreciate it, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. You're a nice evening.
That's it. That's good.
We'll now go to item 2.1, addition to the agenda. Does anybody have any additions to the agenda? All righty then. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the meetings of the February 14th? Regular meeting and March 4th, special meeting, please. Follow.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is 3.1 through 4.1. So that includes the treter's report, financial report, consideration of claims, transportation report, cafeteria reports, transportation proposition, Hamilton Public Library bonds proposition. And spring coaches. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Sure.
Second? I'll second. So discussion. I'm going to jump in for spring coaches. There is the motion to...
Are we sending a memo in some of the students?
Oh, it's just contingent upon her unpaid...
Yeah, I was just looking for the... So, so we're rescinding this here?
For her as a coach, but including her as an unpaid contingent upon her certifications.
Okay.
Is there any value of discussing why?
I hope you can get it.
She does not have a coaching certification nor does she have CPR first aid or EED. So she can't be a...
So she can't be a coach.
She can be unpaid contingent upon her getting CPR first aid or EED.
Does anybody have any questions about the propositions or anything else?
Do we know where the library proposition comes in numbers-wise relative to the past?
It's actually lower. There's the last year it was like almost 4%.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to our presentations from teachers. So we have Ms. Chamberlain and no, no.
April. April.
So they're going to push to April?
Yes.
Josh has the show?
Yes.
All right. X. She ready for Josh? Josh, you want us to move? You're good? You just come down, talk to us? All right, come on down.
You gotta talk?
All right, then we're gonna move. We'll get that. Just hit the button on that, it turns on. There you go.
So I'm just going to share with you some of my job shadows of the past year with this positive CTE. First one was to Dr. Allen Works, Casanova, where I shared Travis Ames for the entire day. He taught me the process of order from start to finish. He also taught me that a customer changes their mind midway through the project. He taught me that they build all kinds of things from staircases and railframes to old car parts and a little propeller. My takeaway from him was that every day may seem the same, but in a day you feel sort of accomplishment that you got a project a step closer to being finished. My next one was to Chris Tech wire in Rome where I got sponsored. Many different ways wires made from a single spool of copper. I was able to chat with two people for the entire day who are able to run a company. I learned that many people play roles there and that every role is important, no matter how small it was. My next one was to K T Architects, Island Syracuse, who are currently going to be working on a new central school over the next few years. I learned that they used to work for people to central school. I learned that they used to work for a central school where they added on the elementary gym and laundry glass windows. I could just look at eight different kinds of jobs there as a tour, own the company. I learned that many different people have different job tests, from really medical buildings to education buildings like schools and key cares. My next one was to Bruce Ward, who actually worked for K K for thirteen years. He decided to open up his own business, help small and large families that he realizes. He taught me that you can only satisfy a handful of people within the family or within the business. So you always have to try everything with the best of your ability to satisfy as many people as you can without causing any problems. My next one was to a job interview practice out in Stockbridge Valley Central School, where I physically had to practice and learn how to submit a resume, job description, and a cover letter as if there were a job interview. I was in front of three live judges, where they were pretending to be managers for a job that I really wanted. My next one was to Mazer's Custom Buildings, where I got to shadow Jeremy Mazer for the day, where he took me on tours of houses that he was currently managing when people were away on vacation, busy families. And he also taught me about what he was currently doing with his team, managing houses that he'd worked, if they weren't successful, even when they were problems. My next one was to the University of Yorkshire outside Hamilton, where I got to shadow the entire mechanic shop for the whole day. I got to see them do basic stuff, like tire rotation, oil change, which I got to do my first oil change and tire rotation first time. They taught me that there are always going to be another person, another hand if they needed help, no matter how small it was. That they're always said to be there for one another. My takeaway from all this was to help me decide where I wanted to go. I'm glad I got to hear those stories and experience what they did that problems where they are today. Future decision is attending to need to hide in the fall of 2019. To a bachelor's degree in Megatronics. Megatronics is a new engineering program that's only a few years old. Where they feature everything from creating a nutcracker on solid bricks, which is a computer program, to hands-on, really nineteen-year.
What was your favorite experience out of all? Was it one of you guys stood out or...
Yeah, when I moved, because I was really fascinated how they built the most beautiful tables, chairs, staircases.
You think they'll do your own? Can you just have your hat?
You think your parents are gonna make you do the oil changes now?
Well, thank you for sharing your career. Sounds like you have learned a lot.
Learned a lot, please.
You did. Very cool. And congratulations on your decision for that one. Very exciting. Thank you for coming here, Sharon.
Good job.
Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry, you're gonna have to hand you the...
First I'll do.
Apparently that one's one of the most controlled.
He just stepped out. Well, thank you again, Josh. That was wonderful. And now we have moved to five point two for the community participation. Would you like to come forward? Six point one personnel, we have one resignation. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Don Foster as a full-time bus driver effective March fifth, sincere appreciation for services rendered to the district. All of them? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have two appointments. We have an appointment for a full-time probationary bus driver and three appointments to the substitute list. Can I have a motion for those appointments?
I assume. Edward Backer, can you kind of say it?
I just wasn't gonna read any of this because I was probably gonna get them all.
Paul, can you say that again?
Backer.
The way I looked.
Looking like Scotty's never heard of me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we have a second?
I didn't hear it.
Did we have a second?
Second.
There we go. All those in favor? Do it appropriately. Six point two, can I have a motion to approve the recommended, the recommendation of the committees on special education, preschool special education? Any discussion would happen in executive session.
I'll move.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I like the color.
May I have a motion to approve the class of 2019 senior trip to Lake George's Flags from June twenty-sixth to June twenty-eighth, as recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent, contingent upon meeting all planning requirements of the administration? Please note that the Board of Education reserves the right to cancel the trip if the circumstances should arise concerning the safety of students. All of them?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a chat going. Hopefully you do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we abstaining?
There's an offer volunteer.
Six point four, can I have a motion to adopt policy four, three, two, one, as recommended by the business manager and superintendent?
Appropriate that the baking went sports.
Motion?
So, I'll say it.
Any discussion? Thank you for everybody for working on that policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to approve Hamilton's combined participation in Morrisville Eaton's modified track team during the eighteen-nineteenth spring season, as recommended by the acting athletic director and superintendent? All of them?
Second.
Discussion? How many do you have?
Nine.
Nine?
So we have varsity track appeal here.
Correct.
But no JV?
There is no JV.
Okay.
There's not JV track. It's modified in the varsity, in the South State Conference.
So how big is the more, so how big will the team be combined with Morrisville? How many kids will...
I don't know how many kids Morrisville has. I know we're in excess, we're above thirty kids last chapter, thirty-two on our varsity track team. Male, female. Yeah. Numbers are great.
So by the time these kids get to be varsity, there will be enough for them to still be here theoretically?
Oh, yes, they're already, yeah.
No, but I mean, these kids, they're going modified to Morrisville.
We just don't have enough to field a modified team here.
Right. Got it.
Parents will be responsible for transportation. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to accept the monetary donation of two hundred and eighty dollars from the Colgate students fundraiser with sincere appreciation and to increase the budget by this amount, as recommended by the business manager and superintendent. Discussion?
Hey, look at Kevin as well. We were approached by a group of students, it was October, November, December, that had heard that we had got the after-school grant. And they had heard that we didn't have money for snacks. And the students met with me and I think, I can't remember Kevin, if you were there for the initial meeting, Matt was there. What a nice group of young people. And they said they would go out and try to do some fundraising. And they did. And a guy called Leila, am I saying that right, or Leah, Leila, whatever it was, I can't remember her last name, took the lead, kids went out, nickled me back, they boarded me, whatever, and came up with two hundred and eighty dollars to help us. We had set this up a couple of different times for them to be present. I really, really wanted to do the students. One thing led to another, and this is the week that they're on break. But I do want to recognize this special effort. I know we've accepted donations at larger amounts and stuff, but the effort that we worked at these kids did, I think it's great.
Thank you.
And it really helps the after-school programs. What? When did... Well, we got it. There was a first and a second.
Ellen and Harry. You have seconded it?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to seven point one. Can I update?
Oh, you.
Your update.
Your turn, I'll follow you.
For my budget update tonight, I sort of, in terms of the format and my sort of plan of attack, it's mirroring my presentation from the budget coffees two weeks ago. I guess it was a week and a half ago. Unfortunately, things have changed and the outlook is a little more bleak now, which I'll get to in a minute. The first thing I want to do is an update, I think I talked about this in February, is to give you a final update on the tax levy and the tax cap that's been submitted to the state comptroller's office. It's been finalized and no changes from what I've been saying all along. Our final allowable levy increase for nineteen-twenty under the tax cap, the New York State tax cap, is two point eight four percent. And what that equates to on a current levy of about seven point three million dollars is roughly two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So to stay within the state tax cap, the adopted budget would require a tax increase of two point eight four percent or less. I'll get back to that in a minute. I'm just gonna buzz through this. Really, it's pretty much status quo from this year to next year. No new pilots, payments, and rule of taxes, so that exemption was constant. No change in our capital levy exclusion, so our debt service is pretty much leveled out as far as our building that, our school bus borrowings. The allowable levy growth factor, this is where the two percent is often from around, it's actually the lesser of two percent for the statewide CPI, rate of inflation. So I don't recall exactly what it was, but it was greater than two for the year. So every school district in New York State used two percent as a baseline number. And then the last number, the second bullet there, the tax base growth factor, that's a district-specific number that you need to each school district that takes into account the actual growth in a tax base. So that's actual physical additions to a tax base. And that number was fairly close to what it was last year, which ultimately led to, I think last year we were two eight nine, this year we're two eight four, so that's where we're at. The chart below gives you a look at the recent tax history. This dates back seven years, so seven years of complete data. These are the seven years that the tax cap has been implemented. So, you know, it seems like yesterday, a lot of legislative activity centered around whether or not there would be a tax cap. It's hard for me to believe that we've already had seven years. Next year we'll be again. So you can see with the exception of one year that was, where we actually had a negative allowable, which we did override. We've been fairly consistent in what we've gone out with for tax levying purposes. So any questions on that page before we move on? Unfortunately, I think this next page, we're gonna spend more time and we may have some more questions. So I'm just gonna put the bad news out there right away. I tried to simplify this and really focus on some of the key points. So as of today, everything that we know, looking ahead to next year, and keeping everything in the budget for this current year that's currently in the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen budget. So that includes salaries of people that may not be here this year. So we'll talk about areas to save, those are probably gonna be the first areas that we look. But a budget for next year that includes everything currently in the budget, as well as what we know today moving forward to nineteen-twenty, where we've got quite a deficit in terms of getting underneath the tax cap. So the budget would be around thirteen and a half million dollars, which is a four point one percent increase. And it would require a tax levy increase of seven point two one percent. The deficit, if you will, to get underneath the tax cap would be about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's the initial sticker shot. I think, you know, in speaking with my colleagues and paying attention to the local media, there's a lot of factors that are impacting many school districts in this area, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. I know some of our neighboring districts have publicized some what they anticipate to be major cuts. We always strive to balance the budget without any cuts, certainly without laying anybody off. If we make cuts, we look to deal with your attrition. Certainly this year will be no exception to that. So I tried to break this down, you know, the actual budget draft document is twenty pages of spreadsheet line by line. We'll get into more detail as we move through the process. But what I wanted to focus on was on the revenue side, the two main sources of revenue, and then really the three or four main cost drivers on the express side. Referencing the previous sheet, as I mentioned, an allowable tax levy increase of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars of added revenue for nineteen-twenty. New York State Foundation Aid, which currently is, I think, three point three million. So it's, you know, our tax levy's seven and a half million. It's the other primary source of revenue. This is our basic operating aid. This is the aid that school districts receive from the state. That for most districts in this area, that is the lion's share of their revenue. Or a little bit different, our tax levy is sort of the inverse of most districts because of our love. But based on the executive budget proposal from the governor, we would see a foundation aid increase of two point two percent, which is seventy-three thousand dollars. So there are other revenue items in the budget that fortunately we're gonna see an increase. Interest and loan, interest rates are in the wrong. But by and large, the two main revenue pieces are the tax levy and the foundation aid. The good news is, we anticipate that when the state budget is adopted on or around April first, we anticipate at our time again, that we'll see a bigger increase in our foundation aid in addition to that seventy-three thousand. What that will be, we're not real sure. But I have some data to give you some perspective into what it might be. This current year, the executive proposal, so the governor's... Just this week, the senate and the assembly had released their budget proposals. Both the senate and the assembly are calling for education increases of about $1.6 billion, so about one and a half times what the governor's proposing. Out of that $1.6 billion, $1.2 billion of that would be increases to foundation. So more than three times an increase to foundation aid than what the governor's proposing. Now, does that mean we can expect three times that $73,000, or 72, yeah, $73,000? Probably not, not exactly. This is the point where, you know, the old saying in New York State politics, you have the three people in our room, you have the governor, the representative from the assembly, representative from the senate. So how can we project what that might look like for next year? Last year, at this time, or current school year, the initial executive proposal was $338 million increase to foundation, same exact increase initially proposed as this year. The senate last year proposed, around nearly a year ago this week, $717 million in foundation aid. And one little tidbit, last year it was a Republican-controlled senate, so this year, because they're both controlled by the Democrats, the foundation aid increases, it's more consistent and it's more. And last year, the assembly called for a $1.2 billion in foundation. The enacted budget had an increase of $619 million. So generally what happens is, you have your executive proposal, you have your senate proposals that are lofty and they settle somewhere in between. Now, the fact that the senate's calling for more this year, could that mean that what's settled on is even a little more? I hope so. I don't know if that means that. So if I had to guess, I would say maybe $30,000 to $50,000 more. That's just a guess. I hope it's more. I hope it does. So certainly that would be a significant chunk that would reduce that $320,000 in the red on top. So, you know, with this $320 in the red, there's two things we have to do, we either have to increase the green or reduce the red. As far as the expenditures go, you know, the first two are contractual obligations. Our total district payroll is about $5 million, so we anticipate our total payroll increasing about 4%. Districtwide, which is $200,000. Now, mind you, the two, as of right now, the two main revenue sources is equal to about $280. So just wage increases alone, keeping everything intact, eats up 200 of that 280. The next piece is health insurance premiums, our health consortium, our rate increase. For next year's, it'll be 6.5%. It's about $2.5 million in our budget, on that budget line, what the district contributes for health insurance. So that 6.5% increase equates to about $170,000. So just in those two lines alone, you can see we've exceeded what our increase in revenues. The next two dots, you know, the first two dots are what we discuss every year. They, we know we're going to have to deal with those, we plan for them. In a general sense, we can handle that. When we have problems is when we have years where there are anomalies and some strange things going on. And when I say strange things, I mean relatively speaking from a budget perspective, I don't mean that necessarily strange. So the two big things that we're contending with right now, and that have really had the most impact on next year, is special education and legal services. And I want to spend a little bit of time on special ed. Based on this current draft, we would have to increase our special programs budget by $220,000. So again, furthering that, if you add those up, is at $605,900. Subtract the green, if you take away the special ed, we'd be pretty close. We have five students that have had a major impact on our budget. Any discussion in detail obviously wouldn't take place in this public session. But since last year when the budget has been adopted, we have one student that was enrolled with us last year that's going to see a significant change in program. And then we have four students that have moved into the district, two over the summer and two in the last two weeks. And those five students, between changing existing program and the four new students to the budget, equates to $280,000. So to kind of put this into perspective, if you go back to that original $320, if we didn't have to deal with those, the impact of those five students, you know, that red number would be $40,000 and this conversation would be a lot different. In all likelihood, the increase in foundation aid would cover that deficit, we'd be talking about adding things right now. I firmly believe that that would be the conversation. It's a growing concern. We continue to see a number of special ed students relocated to our district. Looking a little closer, more closely recently, the two that have moved in, actually, I'm sorry, three out of the five are in rental properties. You know, you know this is near and dear to me, we've talked about housing, and as we've seen an increase in rental properties in this community, I think it attracts more transient population. I think it's all tied together. We continue to see an increase in our referrals. I know Mary provided me with some information, through the end of February of this year, we had 35 referrals to the CSE through February. Ten years ago, we had 26 in the whole year. Our special ed budget has doubled in the last 10 years. So that's a growing concern as far as the budgetary impact. Lastly, legal services, and this is such a challenge and such a moving target. Currently, this year, we're about $60,000 over budget for legal fees, and it's fees that we are paying in our terms to handle legal matters. The two issues that we have incurred, most of our legal fees, you know, in addition to what we budget for and what we're accustomed to, are residency issues and special education. And again, in speaking with my colleagues in other districts, residency issues are popping up all over the place. Districts are dealing with this much more than they have in the past. When you get right down to it, we have, we in other schools, there are lots of kids that are going to school where they shouldn't, or where the law says they should. And, you know, it's such a sensitive issue, they're so specific, case by case. Unfortunately, we, you know, the kids don't know what's going on, which is terrible. But when it comes to educating kids, certainly, again, just from a budgetary standpoint, it can be very expensive, and then also in special education. So we have some ongoing things right now, that there's some uncertainty as to whether or not they will continue into next year. If we know that they will, uncertainty, that's certainly something that we should account for in the budget. But as I stated, that the numbers right now don't reflect any increase in legal services, so that's another area where we could be looking to beef things up a little bit. And again, not good news, with the two additional special ed students, the message, Michelle, it's changed since two weeks ago, a week and a half ago. So we'll hope for some good news, hope for some positive things in the next month or so. Wait until state budget and see where we're at, so we have to answer the questions or clarify. In a general sense, right now, certainly, I think we're going to discuss some other things which we should consider in this public session.
Any specific questions that I have? I have a couple of those.
My only question is where the next budget coffees are. Are they?
They are scheduled, yes.
Okay.
They were very poorly attended last week. Even with the one preceding the special board meeting on Monday night, we're hoping that that will settle the crowd. I'm up for suggestions.
I know they're poorly attended, but I still think we need to get them on calendar and ahead of time. Have you done one with PTO?
I've offered to go to PTO meetings, so either in April, I'd be happy to go.
That seems like...
Well, I'd be sure of it. Certainly present at PTO. Any other meetings? We're going to attend faculty meetings, building. Yeah, I could schedule last week in March and then second weekend April, just to update this call on.
What's our timeline for the board to adopt the budget? April 23rd?
Uh...
That's the part I'm trying to understand. I think it is.
It's right after, it's right after the break. So it's that Friday, I believe it falls on Saturday, so it might be by on Monday, but it's basically the Monday after April break. It's later than usual because of the way the calendar fell, the vote, I think, is the 21st.
We have our meeting on the 23rd.
Yeah, that's the adoption. What I would like to kick around, we have a lot of work to do administratively and, you know, make some determinations as we go forward. I mean, this $320,000 over our tax levies significantly. So we have a lot of work to do administratively. So what I would like to suggest, and then we'll see what the legislature does, hopefully by April 1st, that may help us. I don't expect a lot out of it, being honest with you, for that $320,000. So what I'd like to do is to have a special meeting before April 23rd, so that will give us a couple of weeks to work together, get past April 1st. The week of April 8th seems to be the best, because that's the week before the break and then our, however, the week of April 8th, the 10th, that Wednesday, we're scheduled to go to the Los Zanis Center for the Boise's annual meeting. So I don't know how we either 9th or 11th. Might work for the board for a special meeting, but I know we need to get back to Kevin.
So typically, we have, we do have a special meeting typically in early April, and we call it sort of our preliminary budget hearing and the possible adoption of budget. So if things were finalized, the board could take action on the budget that night. If not, the meeting scheduled for the 23rd after break would have to be that stuff. And then we have to do all of our reporting to the state, get the newsletter ready, do all that stuff, so we can, yeah, I just backed up with Pete, so I think it would be helpful to do that that week. You know, I know the 11th, there's no school on 12th, so the 11th would be up against the break in terms of Thursday evening.
Is the 12th Good Friday? That's the following week?
Anything works here then.
Okay, so the, I know the 9th, is that one for the board?
Very good spot, very good down.
There's baseball game the 8th. I totally heard the counting, just because there's a baseball game the 8th.
So we know we're in the snow in April, but...
I know. Baseball, the baseball season, you might as well just like crumble up the original schedule when it's thrown out.
So we're looking at the 9th?
It's 2 way to 9th.
We could do 6 or earlier, depending on your schedule. I'd prefer later probably. So we'll hold to 6 on the 9th. Does that work?
And we'll plan some coffees a couple weeks into March, maybe first week of April.
Hey, I talked with the, who do you do, Rotary? Have you been on their schedule?
Hopefully so.
Can you work on that and do a presentation there? I think that would be helpful, that be a community outreach.
Any other community groups that meet regularly?
The fire department.
I might ask a question. What's the purpose of, what would be the board's purpose of having so many community offerings? What would we go, what's your...
If we have to override the tax cap, we need people to understand.
As far as outreach, to me, once we know the direction we're going, we may be, you know, closer to the vote.
Yeah, so that pushes that out a little further. It's fine, I just, I do think it's important to get in front of the community, because they're the ones that are voting. They're the ones that need to under, they're the ones that have kids here in the school and need to understand.
Or don't, and you still need to understand.
That we're having, if we're having changes, or why we're having changes, why we're not adding something that they've been begging for for years or whatnot, and I don't have an example or things when I say them, but I do think it's important to be in front of the community. And I understand that we have this meeting, I understand that we have minimal people that come. Likely understand that people don't watch the media, or they can, but they don't, but I still think the more we do, the better it is for us and for the community in general. The more we try to be in front of them, I just, I do feel that that is important.
So then the answer, that's what I've been asking for.
I mean, I don't think it'd be like on the road for weeks, but a couple.
Closer with, with we have a better direction.
Yeah, I mean, if, if...
We have more information.
If the end of March is a good time, because you want to wait till that April date, like, then push it and get it.
No, you answered the question.
You know, I think even without updates, there may be no change in this in the next two weeks, but even without that at the coffees, it's a time to engage in a conversation. You don't have to talk about specific numbers. We can talk about concerning trends, we can talk about environmental factors in the community, we can give feedback, so it's, I don't look at it as, you know, if we only do a coffee if something changes, but we can schedule them and get the word out.
I think it's, yeah.
I know we, some of the ones I was two years ago, we unraveled some of the mysteries of what was going on with kids and where they're going and some of that. I don't think it's helped us to fix anything, but it was a conversation that hadn't happened until we had it that way.
And I know last year with the housing, that kind of thing, really, you had people from different walks of the community that really contributed, whether it was Holgate student housing or rental properties, and really, a lot of it, so.
Thank you.
That's about it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thanks. I have typed up for the board, I'm hesitant, I'm not sure I have the right text. I believe I have acted for an interview and I'll hang out at the board's. Get everybody? All right, now speaking of this. What I just handed the board is a typed up draft that formalized an 11-year data study of staff leaving the district. So what the board is looking at is that over those 11 years, 150 staff members have left the Hamilton School District. That averages, if I did that right, to about 10, 10 and a half a year. And then I broke it... I have typed up for the board, I'm hesitant, I'm sure I have the right. I believe I have acted for interview and I'll aim at the board to see what we can get everybody. All right, now speaking of this. What I just handed the board is a typed up draft that formalized an 11-year data study of staff leaving the district. So what the board is looking at is that over those 11 years, 150 staff members have left the Hamilton School District. That averages, if I did that right, to about 10, 10 and a half a year. And then I broke it down to what I've known to be about 10 and a half a year on average. 22 retired, 22 of the staff members, roughly 19% have retired and are pulled for 11 years. 22, that's two a year on average. 19, almost two a year, have been recommended not to continue in the district and has been sold over 11 years. And then we have information that a number of people moved, were promoted elsewhere and so on.
Can I jump for?
Yes, go ahead here because I was just trying.
By, by staff, do you mean teachers and administrators?
All staff.
Total employees?
All staff.
Okay, thank you.
All total employees, all staff. Support staff, teachers, assistants, bus drivers.
Okay, thank you.
20 left for various reasons, those are the ones I'm thinking about, 18 left for a similar position. So those kinds of moves, the lateral moves or you have reasons you really can't get at, those might be the ones that we have the most control over and that came to about, what were we going to do with Mad Man, about a third of the staff. So if we were going to focus on that, you know, that was about three and a half staff a year over. So if we're going to focus on environment, culture, you know, what are the real reasons, what's in our control, what can we do differently? You know, retirements, physically moving, those are harder to control. So what I've done behind this report is I have drafted and I have shared this with HT advisory, can I do that? I did, I did share with HT advisory, looking for feedback. I did what is called a stay interview, or stay questionnaire. So we haven't determined how to do this yet, but for people who continue to work here randomly and we'll get this out, what's the main reason you stay and continue to work in Hamilton? Are there other reasons that you stay and continue to work in Hamilton? So there may be multiple reasons. You check, guess, what are those reasons? And then we ask a series of questions such as, how would you agree or disagree with the following statements? I feel proud of my time working in Hamilton. I feel valued in Hamilton. I would, I would recommend Hamilton as a good employer. Try to get some data. And, you know, we got to do this by survey monkey or some way so that we are not, do not want to know who we are looking for information. Section three, the environment in which I work, and then we asked the grade of work with very good outstanding, my workload is, my working relationships with my colleagues are, the support I receive from school administration is, my travel to and from work. So we're trying to get a sense of why people stay. And we may have answers that people who are staying and still think that their relationships are poor or whatever, but they're still here, but at least we'll get data. My school community is, and then we asked another couple of open-ended, and at the end we asked our instructional staff, support staff, administrative staff. I'm not even sure we have to do it, but just as a draft, get information. Then I did a concept called an exit questionnaire that's predicated on the state questionnaire or it's in the past tense. I left because my relationship with my colleagues was, my supervisor or leadership supervisor. So we rolled that out to try to get some data. The thing that's challenging about this for me, and what we've talked about is, what are the things over which we have control? What can we do together to create the climate, if you will, create the culture in which people will feel valued? You know, we talk about housing in Hamilton, I understand it, but I still think there are people who are choosing to not live in Hamilton, in the district. And I'm not sure it's only housing related. If I'm with a significant other or I'm with a spouse who has a job in Syracuse, then I might choose to live halfway between Syracuse or Utica for that matter, or Norwich where there seem to be some industrial centers. There may be other reasons people don't live in Hamilton. It's not just the village with the housing costs. There's rural, there's property in the district that's beyond the village itself. Are people choosing not to live in the district because it's financially better for whatever reason, to live in the head city, Stockbridge, Alior, I'm not sure. So, you know, I don't want to pin it on any one thing, but let's see if we get some data, get some information. And again, as I said, I look with advisories on this and they certainly welcome to give that feedback, either right now or after another chance to review this or.
I just want to say it's a great start. One thing we have found this board in particular, I think, is that there's a lot of narratives that get out there that we don't know what they're based upon. And when you push and try to dig, you can't find what's based upon it. So to get some actual actual numbers, things that you calculate and see that this is what's really going on, I think it's a great first step. And at least give us a direction areas of things, you know, topic areas that we need to address, I think that's good.
And I'm looking out to the audience too. I mean, some of you are here it is for the first time or some of you have heard it from advisory. I welcome any feedback on this, I mean, whether you go through Zach or come directly to me and, you know, all right. So any feedback, any, you know, people don't like the witnesses' words, we should be there wherever, we listen, but I think we got to start to get some information the best we can, anonymously.
So, so are you going to actually try to sort of track down past employees and ask these questions? Have you thought of the exit or?
I'm not 100% sure if we would go way back with that, this might be something.
Using it as, using it as the actual exit interview curve?
Yes, as an exit or go back a little bit. I'm not sure of that. Stay, I don't know if we should be all staff, have the opportunity or push it randomly, you know, leave random numbers and you jump around so you get a single. I'm not sure. But I want to give feedback first, I want some kind of, you know, yeah, but you, yeah. Ellen whispered in my ears, whisper, take me a little time. She does, she absorbs it, she gets thrown, then she gets back and, yeah, you get that. Okay, now lean around, it's open, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have more. No, I'm good. I'm going to let the administrative school face cover. Thank you.
Administrative reports and some updates on the safety of school since our board went out. Why is it safety, I go first. May I mention a lot of the, we're, we're pulling a lot of annual review meetings. We've had extremely high volume of special education referrals, that's a piece of a lot of time I do in that. And of course keeping current with ever-changing special education regulations and all the time comparing for some of the legal matters that we're involved in right now. So we're very busy, but we're making a lot of great progress, but we're having a hard time keeping up with the special education referrals and it's just, it's very, it's very costly, I mean, some of the programs, the things that are coming in, parents are expecting a new program. So it's, it's a challenge, but we're working on it. Thank you.
I have some accomplishments I'd like to recognize publicly. First, Donna Moran and her staff and cast and crew of the Adams family, outstanding. Three shows that were just incredible, incredible. On March 8th, our jazz ensemble traveled to Oneida to participate in jazz festivals. A reading festival rather than the award festival, so they were adjudicated by nationally known judges. For the second year in a row, they received a gold medal and several students received honorary all-star awards. Ben Pollak received an all-star award for his alto sax feature, I Dreamed a Dream. Tarek Jeralu received an all-star award for his solos on TJ's Boogie and Water Mountain Man. And Ryan Hunt, Jacob Stewart received all-star recognition for their work on setting up solid groove on Water Mountain Man. So congratulations to them. Congratulations to Mr. Cauldron for his leadership of our jazz band. And then we have two students that are going to be inducted into the NTHS, the National Technical Honor Society at BOSIS on March 27th. Sarah Gerberg is going to be inducted into the New Visions Professions and Colin Fidel will be inducted into the Honor Society for Engineering, so tremendous.
Congratulations to both of them.
Yes, safety updates. Our sixth through 12th grade students, with the help of Chris, are in the middle of answering a survey on what they feel is safe at school, what things we do well, what things we can improve upon, do they feel safe in classrooms, bathrooms? Do they see guns in the school? Do they see bathing in the school? All encompassing safety survey. So that's done anonymously and that's up to our sixth through 12th grade students, so we can gather that data. We had ordered a webinar for our front staff, front office staff, the attendants, that, they could only send it to us 21 days after the actual webinar. We were hoping to receive it today so they could view it tomorrow. It did not happen, so that's forthcoming. Anonymous alerts, I think Chris will talk about. April 26th, we will have the Sandy Oak Promise presentation for our sixth through 12th grade students. And I think that's it for safety for me.
So just the last day today, we've been working with Bankified Learning, it's a group out in Indianapolis. They're coming to us to help us as we venture into project-based learning. As many recall, our teaching plan was done, project-based learning was identified as a, as a goal for PD and for instruction, and so we're meeting that at the man. Through the SSAE grant, we were, we were able to secure Bankified Learning. We chose them over a number of PBL professional development companies. Bill and I spoke and we've been teaming with some of the, some of the other organizations that do this and settled on Bankified Learning. They, they, they fit what we wanted the most, and so they started today. A representative of Bankified Learning was out today, he'll be here tomorrow. He's doing focus groups with all different constituents of the learning communities. He's met the teachers, he's met the students. Morris has spent most of the day with teachers. He met with our steering team this evening. They had both the elementary and high school steering team, so he could gather information from community members. Did walkthroughs today in about a dozen classrooms, sat down with notes. There's a survey that's gone out, the teachers have to fill out, asking them, not the teacher to fill out about their thoughts and about practice-based, project-based learning. So, yeah, we're excited to have him here. It's step one, he's really collecting data, doing an analysis and helping us to prepare for the next steps, helping us to, what do we really want as a school for project-based learning? We all in, he calls it wall-to-wall PBL. Are we partially PBL? If we are, what is it going to look like? So he's helping us to identify those through meeting with groups and doing some data analysis. And that, so our next step should be, this summer, we'll have an institute where teachers would be invited and paid through the SSAE grant to participate in a four-day PBL. We call it 101, it's an initial training. We've had 101 before with the Institute about five years ago. Many of our teachers were here, but this training will be a different, it's tailored to us based off our use of analysis, so maybe he's doing now. So they'll be here and then, and we'll go from there. We're planning for our short-term, long-term for PBL. So we're excited about that. And Jess, I was going to have, if you don't mind, just a quick update, the SSAE grant and the school.
Anyway, we need actually one of the things we talked about today is building community partnerships and part of the SSAE grant matches teachers with outside professionals. So we've got some very exciting partnerships formed between some of our teachers and some people in the community. Right now, we have several different after-school programs running, everything from middle school modeling led to digital art, from kindergarten to trade to reading printing, Bright Knights, War Games, Lego Robotics, premier is continuing. And, you know, so for example, Tori is working on visual arts and it's been amazing for her because she's been teamed up with a local graphic designer and it's given her the time and materials and the fashion developments, so she feels now very comfortable to bring that to her curriculum next year, which is, you know, sustainability and that's definitely what we want to see come out of this grant. I had a good fortune of presenting to the Hampton Board about the other night, we got our art on this grant. And, you know, it's been very eye-opening for me, my sense of that, you know, as teachers who work so often in a vacuum, so to be able to be part of another school district has been amazing and I really want to thank you, Beth, really hard on ordering. Obviously, this grant has meant that, you know, Beth's had to order more at that and the whole department and Debbie Curry certainly has helped me a lot with some different aspects of the grant. So we're moving forward into a third session for that after school year and then we're also planning for a very exciting summer for really all of our students. We're not just thinking about targeting kids who need that extra jumpstart over the summer, but more for everyone in our K D population, so more to come on that.
How many students do we have?
We have 150 right now. So the SNAP money, yeah, totally been used.
Go ahead.
How many kids are in that population total? It's two.
About 350.
Well, population total.
K8.
Oh, and that whole population.
Probably more, like 350 something.
So you've got about half of them or you less than half.
Yeah, and there were, there was a different group in the first session. So some kids were in the first session from November until February and now this is another session. And then we are, we'll offer a whole loose-mattering of after-school activities or programs for the third session. So, yeah, hopefully we'll be able to affect a big population of kids in the grant, which is exciting, and teachers as well. And we're, and they brought some personal things, some really nice equipment too, to really foster our communication skills with the students that will be ongoing and sustainable as well.
I know summer seems like a far way away, but it's not, especially for parents that have to plan.
Yeah.
I've already planned half of my summer already, so getting information to parents about summer is earlier the better.
Yeah, it's the same timeframe that we've always had, so we will definitely.
But if, but if there aren't, if you weren't part of it before, then you don't know what that is, and if you don't know that you can be included in it.
Yeah, we'll definitely be about that, thank you. And we're, we're working out of that track. That's always been the goal in our community.
Wow, gives a weak overlap.
Yeah.
Because he's medical.
For the most part, we try to keep our kids really actively busy the whole summer, so we try to really communicate with, you know, rec programs so that kids are enjoying what happens. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And just a quick safety update too. We're continuing our character education program. We had something just this past week. Kindness is our new character trait that we're celebrating with some kids, with the kids, to, to providing all the families. But we always, a piece of our character education segment is always about to say something, so we do that. We have posters up in the hallway and it's funny that today, I sat in with this, the elementary students as the, as the Bankified Learning professionals here, asking them questions, surveying them, what do they like about school, asked them really very interesting. I said to myself after, I'm going to start doing this without the PD guy, just bring in 12 kids and talk to them because you learn so much. But the first question he asked, he said, tell me something about your school that would be good to know. And so, huge, all was amazing, it's fun, I like being here with my friends, all positives. Three of the students commented, I feel safe here in school. Three of them, so I think that's telling that the first thing when he asked, just tell me something about your school, I feel safe here. That was good to hear.
I feel like I've been, in one way or another, working very closely with all the members of the administrative team. We've got three very, two friends, of course. Working with Bill a lot on the safety stuff. We just got the phase two, the welcome kit from the anonymous alerts system that we purchased. And that includes training videos, our own website that, that the students go to to submit the anonymous tips, training, signage, letters for parents, all that stuff. The administrative team needs to just discuss the most responsible way to roll all that out, but we have all that stuff now sent to us. So that's ready to go. Working very closely with Mr. Ellis today with the PBL team, that was really, really great. Just an update about smart schools committee met on March 5th and we were not one of the blessed. Rome City Schools was, as was Syracuse City Schools. Next, the next meeting, the April meeting, will mark 17 months from our submission. The next meeting, the April meeting, will mark 17 months from our supplemental. And so 18 months is about the average, so we should expect to be on next month's doctor or the one after, or our new superintendent makes some phone calls to the state of New York.
Will he as successful as he entered?
It's going on.
Tony, 18 months.
It's funny. So that's a wrap.
The magnifier, the project-based learning, is that K through 12?
It is K through 12, yep.
Okay.
Next up is a reminder for the April 10th Bosse's Annual Meeting. So...
We're outside, yep.
We can work on who's driving, when, on our own, but everybody's headed, so that's a good thing. 7.5, the steering team updates. The elementary met today. The update was just given, in Kevin's report, so I think we're getting a good spot.
Yeah.
Far away.
Yeah, well, so members from both steering teams that were there, and got some really good feedback from PBL.
You're fine.
Yes.
So they're all gone, that's, that's, they look powerful, depending on circumstances, direction. It's the board, myself, Bill.
What was it?
Okay, Dave.
I think that's all.
A thousand dollars to Dave. It's that one.
High school steering committee update?
Yes, we have designated April 10th as our acceptance and connection activity. So, okay, we're going to keep the kids after forum, and we're going to do a acceptance and connection activity with all the kids, we're going to, Vicky Mose's randomized groups, and so all the kids are going to be in groups. They're going to find three things in common, one unique thing to share, and then, we haven't decided how we're going to do this, this is our voting, but the most unique is going to receive a prize, whether it's a homework pass or an ice cream pass or whatever. So just an idea, we're trying to, as a trial run, to see how it works, because our, our long-term goal is opening day of school is to do an activity with our student population connection and creating a culture of acceptance of everyone. So we're kind of using this as a trial run, and then hopefully it goes well, and we'll kind of massage it and adapt it to the opening day in September. Make a fun activity for kids.
PTO update, not here. Emerald Foundation?
There is no meeting.
No meeting. Upcoming meeting date and stuff, oh, that's me. Hi, Derek. We talked at our special meeting about having more meetings. And one of the things that we have said we were going to do for a long time is self-valuation. This is just a copy of a board self-valuation. I have a copy of that.
Okay.
I have one for more.
You have one?
Yep. That's yours. Just so everybody can see, more new. I would like us to take some time and think about it on our own before we come together. I think that it's most useful if we had time to process ourselves and think through things, especially because I know personality. But in general, I think it's important for us all to take the time and look through it and self-reconstruct before we reflect with the team. So if we can do that, that would be great, and then if we can come together and start discussing it. Debbie, would this be a workshop model that we would do?
If you're all together, you'll have to do it as a...
As a workshop, okay. So if we can discuss when we think that this would be a good time to get together, how long we need to be able...
I'm decent, Bill, I'm sorry.
Do we want to, do we want to come together at the end of April? Is that too long from now? We are already meeting on the 9th. Do we want to meet after the budget piece, and do a workshop after that?
Thoughts?
So how long would you expect the budget meeting to be, the budget workshop?
Hopefully, yeah.
Do it after that, that's probably not a bad...
I mean, tell me, keep it an hour, yeah.
So we could do a workshop at seven o'clock that night, and we're all together?
So if, if your special meeting is 21, yeah.
So if everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Would you be driven into that thing?
I mean, I know it's two nights in a row, but we're already together.
We're going to be, yeah, we're already going to be here, so.
I just think it would, and I'm not saying that we need to completely be done with the self-valuation by the end of that meeting, I think it's a beginning point, I think it's a time for us to start to discuss. This is a, as a concept going over, we need to review and start the process.
And, and yes, it will be workshop model, but, but I would assume that it would start executive, because there may be things that we're discussing, or, because it's, I mean, it's like a board retreat type of...
So it doesn't have to be done.
Probably the public, even with the public, right, to get part of the meeting, right?
I think not at first. I think we need to be able to have discussions that may include executive content at first. And then we said we would write a summary to the public, or, or we may have a second conversation in public, but I think we need to be able to have, because I think some of this is going to end up covering, things that have occurred, so.
So the self-review on the 9th, is that...
Not necessarily. We've done public workshops before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate workshops.
But Dylan, I just wanted to be clear.
Do we workshop or just the wall-to-wall?
I, I just thought you guys should have coffee and know what we're doing. I don't know, that's what I wanted to get a feel here.
Yeah, again, we've never done it, so I don't know fully what the sort of process is.
I'd prefer to have the administrator present.
Yeah, and I almost feel like the new administrator, I, I kind of feel like we're, I mean, both would be good, because having your input and then shaping, because part of this is going to be moving forward. We have to evaluate where we've been first, but then part of this is moving forward.
If you don't want to...
Well, let's at least have you there in the beginning of it, and kick you out. So let's do that as a starting point. And then from there, we can work on other upcoming meetings and such, but I think this is where we need to start for now. If anybody else has thoughts for those, but I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lose it and that it became a part of this process.
And I think the extra meetings are going to be covered by budget meetings in the next, you know, we've said we have at least one extra meeting among the, that would interact with the community. I think the budget meetings coming up will probably fully cover that.
So as we figure out if you're going to, if you're going to make it to the PTO meeting, if you're going to do rotary, you can't count that word, but just let us know so we can see if somebody can join you, because that was part of what we had said in the last meeting, is we'd like somebody to join, as, as just somebody to sit in the room, not to present anything. But that way we can have schedules, send the retired man. Yes.
There you go, I'm at the PTO meeting.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
We are on to community participation. Would anyone really like to come forward and participate? Seeing none, we can move on to executive session. Executive session, we'll discuss matters regarding employment history of a particular individual and pending litigation for community.
Those are true.
So we're not going to vote on any, or take any action?
No, no, I'm sorry, no, we're not voting on anything, taking any action after. Could you give me a signal if you're going to stay, so we'll be sure to come back and when we're done? Okay, we'll probably adjourn to the superintendent's office as well. Okay, good, yeah, no action.
No, we haven't, we haven't yet. Can I have a motion?
Oh, a second.
All those with members moving to executive session? Superiors, us?